Espera un par de minutos hasta que lleguen los personajes. Gracias por tomarse el tiempo. Te aprecio mucho. Se puede desayunar. Es muy frío.
Eso es bueno.
Lo siento por la diversión. Vamos a jugar un juego. Gracias por venir. Gracias. Muchas gracias. Está bien. ¿Cómo se llama? Voy a empezar. Vamos a empezar. Estamos listos.
Hola.
¿Qué hacemos en Facebook Live? Estamos siendo enviados.
Hola a todos. Bienvenidos a la Cumbre de Gareth en el 8. Esta es la 8ª Cumbre en 11 Cumbres en 11 Cuentas. Empieza el día grande el 26. Mi nombre es Althea Brennan. Soy junior. Acabo de perder mi año de junior en la escuela de Chadham. Y realmente conocí a Gareth en Hudson. En una reunión que tuvo con los Young Democrats de Columbia. Un par de semanas después de la salida de mi escuela. Que llevé junto con Eli Chappell Malvato, quien está hoy aquí. Y sí, estamos llegando a los días finales de las elecciones. Estoy segura de que todos saben eso, lo cual es muy emocionante. Gareth es el más joven demócrata en la carrera. Uno de los más progresistas. Y creo que para mí, el que tiene las raíces más fuertes aquí. El que realmente va a ser el mejor representante de nosotros en el Congreso. Sabes, ha ido a todas las 163 ciudades de este distrito. Este distrito es enorme. Y realmente ha pasado el tiempo para escuchar a todos. Incluyendo a los de nosotros que no podemos votar. Lo cual es realmente emocionante y especial. Sí, así que aquí está Gareth.
Buenas noches. Quiero agradecer a todos por tomarse el tiempo. Althea, gracias por esa introducción hermosa. Me inspiré cuando conocí a Althea. Althea había llevado la salida de la escuela de Chadham. Y el día siguiente, John Faso dijo al periódico local que esto era, "No es una pérdida de tiempo académico de los estudiantes". ¿Puedes creerlo? Así que los estudiantes se levantaron y querían involucrarse. Y asegurándose de enviarles algo. Quiero decir, alguien que pueda derrocar a John Faso este otoño. Y algunos de mis mejores abogados y personas que me hicieron llamadas telefónicas o Althea y nuestros compañeros de clase estaban respondiendo una frase muy simple diciendo: "No puedo votar, pero ¿votas por mí?" Así que Althea, muchas gracias por hacer eso. Si estás en TV esta noche y en los próximos días verás a Althea en nuestra pantalla de televisión. Así que solo quiero hablar brevemente de mí mismo, de la carrera. Pero lo que es más importante, quiero escuchar vuestras preguntas. Escuchar lo que está en vuestra mente. Sé que tenemos, ¿cuántos días restan hasta el día electoral? Es una decisión muy fácil para mí porque vivo en la que voy a votar. Pero sé que hay seis, siete de nosotros allí. Todos tienen apoyo y han sido casi un año. La razón por la que esto... Tal vez debemos abrir la puerta para que las personas puedan seguir entrando. La razón por la que voy a hacer la Cumbre de la ciudad es que el lunes hace una semana, el lunes pasado hemos completado nuestro viaje nuestro viaje a todas las 163 ciudades aquí en el estado de Nueva York. Y esto es algo que pensé hacer hace septiembre pasado. Ahora que he ido a Winnebago y a todas las ciudades de este distrito. Son más grandes que Rhode Island y Connecticut geográficamente. Así que pasar tiempo en cada una de estas ciudades. Así que una vez que habíamos completado ese viaje el lunes pasado las personas me enviaban mensajes y decían: "Sé que estabas aquí en Chadham, sé que estabas aquí en Hudson, pero no recibí la oportunidad de hablar contigo". Y dije: "Bueno, vamos a hacer 11 Cumbres de las 11 Cuentas en 11 días". Así que puedo dar esa oportunidad, pero también mostrar el contraste con Faso. Él ha estado en el oficio ahora por un año y medio. No ha ayudado a ninguna Cumbre de la ciudad en este distrito congresista que es realmente abierta al público. Para mí no es tan difícil. Instalas algunos asientos, pides a la biblioteca, pones un micrófono y pones un invitado en Facebook o en el periódico local y toma preguntas, escucha ideas. Es lo que prometo hacer en cada ciudad, cada año. Continuaré a cada ciudad cada año si soy privilegiado de ser elegido. Para poder seguir en contacto con los problemas de la comunidad. Pero también, para mí, es el nivel máximo de responsabilidad. Ven y miran a cada uno de ustedes en la mirada. Dicen, te dan la actualización sobre lo que está pasando en Washington. Pero también seguir escuchando sobre lo que está pasando en cada comunidad en el estado de Nueva York. Así que un poco sobre mí mismo. Espero que todos hayan tenido la oportunidad de verlo. El lunes tuvimos la posibilidad de recibir la aprobación del editorial de The New York Times. Gracias. Y esto fue muy emocionante para nosotros, entrevistar a todos los candidatos. Y creo que ellos se dieron cuenta de que sería una carrera muy difícil de ganar. En los últimos dos carreras hemos tenido demócratas que en realidad han raise más dinero que los republicanos. Ambos ciclos, pero perdieron ambos veces. Perdieron por 30 puntos en 2014, perdieron por nueve puntos la última vez. Y creo que da una oportunidad a mi candidatura para recuperar esta posición. Lo cual sé que es lo primero y lo último en todos nuestros espacios, es que tenemos que ganar este otoño. Primero es mi educación local aquí en el estado de Nueva York. Nacido y criado aquí. Pero también creo que mi historia es realmente una historia del estado de Nueva York. Nacido y criado trabajando en un campo. Aprendí cuando salí de la escuela de Kingston. Fuí a trabajar y obtuve un trabajo. No fui a la universidad. Como muchos de mis compañeros no fueron a la universidad. Fuí a trabajar arrendando aguas. Trabajé como policía local. Trabajé duro. Recuerdo que mi amigo se sentó conmigo en algún momento y dijo: "Gareth, eres un joven, tienes que ir a la universidad en algún momento". Así que aplicé a los préstamos públicos en una biblioteca pública. Así que siempre he estado en bibliotecas públicas desde entonces. Entré en SUNY. En realidad obtuve mi título de doctorado en la Universidad de Cuenca, en la ciudad de Nueva York. Y ahí es donde obtuve mi inicio en el servicio público. Quería volver y servir a mi comunidad de alguna forma. Tuve la oportunidad de servir en los niveles más altos del gobierno. Tengo una entrevista con la Casa Blanca. Tengo una beca de Truman. Regresé y trabajé en el oficio del gobernador de Albany. Fue parte de la lucha por la igualdad de género aquí en el estado de Nueva York. Fue parte de la lucha por poner la ley de estado en la ciudad de Nueva York. Pasé mucho tiempo tratando de trabajar en esta comunidad después de la hurra de Irene. Había devastado algunas de esas pequeñas ciudades, en Catskills y más allá. Pero tener un candidato con raíces locales, experiencia gubernamental, creo que es importante porque este ha sido el ataque republicano más alto en los últimos dos ciclos. Es alguien que simplemente se mudó aquí para ir a cargo. Y también sabemos que Faso es un tipo bastante malvado. Es un tipo sutil, va a dirigir anuncios de ataque. Va a dirigir una campaña malvada, como tenía los últimos dos ciclos. Así que tener un candidato que pueda seguirle por su historial, no solo en el Congreso, sino en 1987. He estudiado este historial. Tener un candidato con un fondo político, con experiencia gubernamental hará la diferencia, creo, en mantenerlo responsable por eso. Pero también, si se envía a Congress, que conozca esta comunidad, que tenga experiencia gubernamental para trabajar con nuestros gobiernos locales, nuestros gobiernos de cuentas, sus supervisores, nuestro gobierno estatal. Ayudar a traer esos recursos federales de vuelta a nuestra comunidad. Así que ese es mi fondo. Y cuando estaba pensando en cómo dirigir esta carrera, para mí, ir a cada ciudad es muy importante porque este es nuestro advantage, Faso. Él no aparece, él no hace reuniones de la ciudad. Visité un pequeño evento en un diner de Gavin Monticello. Y después de que todo fuera hecho, el dueño me dijo: "Gareth, amo todo lo que tuviste que decir, pero..." Tenía una imagen de él mismo y Chris Gibson. Y dijo: "Estoy un poco torpe, Chris Gibson está en la balada también y tú también. No estoy seguro de quién voy a votar aquí". Dije: "Chris Gibson ya ha estado en el oficio por casi dos años". No tenía idea de que Faso era un miembro del Congreso. Así que me envió una imagen y la guardé en el mensaje de este. Creo que ese es nuestro advantage, que podemos hacer eso y aparecer en estas áreas. Y eso es lo que he estado haciendo desde el principio de mi campaña. Nos aprobó esta semana por un número de grandes uniones laborales aquí en el distrito, en el estado y más allá. Quien, saliendo de la aprobación editorial de The New York Times, quería apoyar a un candidato que ellos creen que puede ganar esta posición este otoño. Así que ese es mi fondo, ese es mi enfoque. Pero lo que es más importante, me encantaría escuchar lo que está en vuestra mente. Necesitaré preguntas, ideas, pensamientos, preocupaciones. Y me encantaría votar en junio 26, el próximo martes. Así que muchas gracias y gracias a todos por tomarse el tiempo.
¿Hay preguntas?
Sí, venga.
¿Puede hablar sobre su plataforma de salud?
La pregunta está sobre mi plataforma de salud. Así que creo que soy un demócrata de Medicare for All. HCR 676. Para mí es la versión de la ley de Medicare for All de la Cámara, que co-sponsoré junto a más de 100 demócratas. Para mí, esta es una de las luchas más importantes en esta carrera. Para mí, la salud debería ser correcta, no un privilegio. Puedo contarte, podría pasar media hora contándote las historias que he oído en las diferentes ciudades de este distrito sobre familias que han hecho todo bien. Ambos padres están empleados, los niños están en la escuela. Ambos están en planes de seguro de salud privado. Y en el momento en que algo va mal, o toman una segunda fianza en su casa o van en deuda porque no pueden pagar por los gastos básicos de la salud. Pero también Medicare for All... Las personas me dijeron: "¿Puedes ganar con Medicare for All en estas comunidades rurales? Las personas tienen miedo de que el gobierno tome la control de tu salud". Esto no es eso. Este es un sistema no lucrativo que sacará los beneficios de nuestro sistema actual. Estas compañías de seguro tienen un deber fiduciario de sus accionistas. Tienen que asegurarse de que los ingresos suban y las gastos bajen. Los ingresos son lo que pagamos por nuestros premiums. Los gastos son cuando enfermamos. Así que están tratando de asegurarse de que uno suba y otro baja. Y he visto a través de este distrito, he visto a través de este distrito en las ciudades republicanas más rurales que esta cuestión puede ganar. Hice un evento en St. Johnsville, Nueva York. Este es el pueblo más nordestino de Nueva York. Está en la Riva de Mopock en el condado de Montgomery. Y había 15 o 16 demócratas que votaron en la última elección. No hay un pueblo donde muchos demócratas aparecen. Y estaba sentado en un bar junto a la milla local que estaba en la ciudad. Y todos en esa ciudad tenían este banderín azul. Lo compré y lo he puesto desde entonces. Y les pregunté: "¿De qué se trata este banderín?" Y dijeron: "Todos estamos pagando $5 por uno de nuestros estudiantes de la escuela local que tiene leukemia. Es su tercera ronda de quimio, así que estamos recaudando dinero para que la familia pueda pagar". Y me llamó la atención que aquí hay toda una ciudad unida en la necesidad de un sistema de salud mejor. Y es toda una ciudad de personas que son miembros de la Unión laboral. Ellos trabajan en una milla aquí en la ciudad. Esto debería ser una ciudad democrática. Esto debería ser una ciudad donde ganemos como partido. Así que puse mi plataforma. Dije: "Es por esto que aprobaremos Medicare for All. Todos tomamos una foto juntos. Dijeron: "Vuelve el 4 de julio, vuelve para el día de San Patrick. Todos estamos detrás de ti". Estaba gonna postar la foto en Facebook esa noche y luego me di cuenta que había un sticker de Hillary para la prisión detrás de mí. Así que probablemente no fuera una buena idea. Pero podemos ganar en estas áreas si aparecemos y hablamos de, no solo de la economía de Medicare for All. No solo el hecho de que gastemos el 18% de nuestra economía en esto. $10,000 por año para los estadounidenses y somos 37 resultados. Pero la historia real de cómo afecta este distrito. Y en realidad, Faso, él dirá: "Oh, él quiere un plan grande que es muy caro". Me señalaré las varias historias de personas en este distrito que han perdido todo debido a los fracasos del sistema de salud. Y Faso votó para quitar la salud a 65,000 personas en este distrito con su voto para repelar la Ley de Salud Asequible. Así que es por esto que aprobaremos Medicare for All. Y creo que este es un tema que podemos ganar aquí en el estado de Nueva York. Sí, en el fondo.
Estoy un poco preocupada por demonizar al ACCA, pero realmente me beneficio de él. Dependía de la página web del estado de Nueva York de salud y subsidio para mi seguro de salud. Tengo enfermedades vitales. Y esta política es la mejor que he tenido. Y hay tarjetas de bolsillo. Creo que perdí mi mejor tarjeta de salud. No sé, hay tonterías de gastos incluso más allá de lo médico. Que todos los servicios médicos del mundo no te ayudarán cuando tienes que viajar constantemente y no puedes trabajar. Así que hay cosas como eso que se pasan. Pero estoy preocupada que si ponemos en pie y decimos que el sistema de salud es otro fracaso, eso es como decir que el ACCA fracasó. Y realmente, no lo ha sido. Quiero decir, necesita más. Y el problema son los republicanos que están tratando de separarlo. Y antes de que podamos obtener Medicare for All, porque todavía tendremos un presidente republicano. No creo que vaya a ser expulsado. Realmente, creo que podría estar allí al menos hasta 2020. ¿Vais a respaldar, sabes, interrumpientes para, como, básicamente detenerlo?
Sí.
Eso es todo lo que sé. ¿Cuál es el plan en el meantime?
Sí, no, gracias Teresa. Así que este es... El ACCA fue un paso en la redacción. Absolutamente. Esto fue tomar una industria que estaba muy lejos de donde debería estar. Y pasos importantes para ayudar a corregirla. Pero para mí, el fracaso del ACCA fue que todavía se basaba en la industria del seguro de salud privado. Estaba tratando de corregir una industria que creo que es fundamentalmente rota. ¿Fue mejor que antes? Absolutamente. Tens de millones de estadounidenses ganaron cobertura debido al ACCA. Muchos de ellos aquí en los estados es debido a la expansión de Medicaid. Haciendo más personas eligible para Medicaid. Así que esto es absolutamente, hizo que las cosas salgan bien. Pero también, también hubo ciertos desastres. No permitir al gobierno federal negociar costos de drogas restricciones. Y 300 billones de dólares al año de costos extra, principalmente para nuestros ancianos mayores. Así que somos la última nación industrializada. Somos la última nación industrializada que tiene un sistema de salud que se basa en beneficio. Quiero decir, el sistema de seguro de salud está basado en beneficio. Tenemos que, hasta que cambiamos eso, creo que todavía vamos a tener estos problemas. En el interrumpiente, así que en el interrumpiente para llegar allí, hay cosas absolutamente que podemos hacer, incluso con un presidente republicano. Te daré un ejemplo. Así que pequeñas empresas, cuando tienen que ir y comprar planes de seguro de salud bajo el cambio de bolsillo, están haciendo mucho como individuos. Estos son planes caros, con deductibles grandes. Creo que el más barato que hay ahora es $350 por persona, con un deductible de $6,000 o así. Pero si eres una empresa grande, digamos que tienes 1,000 empleados, puedes ir a Blue Cross, Blue Shield o Edna y decir: "Hey, voy a traer a 1,000 nuevos clientes, dame un buen trato". Y tu trato fue mucho mejor. Así que aquí hay una idea. ¿Por qué no permites que 100 empresas de 5 personas se unan? Para que puedan negociar de fuerza. Para que puedan poner su poder adquisitivo juntos y luego acercarse a Blue Cross, Blue Shield o una compañía de seguro de salud privado y conseguir un plan mucho mejor que proteja a todas esas pequeñas empresas. Ahora, esto en realidad existe, pero se hace por compañías privadas. Así que las compañías privadas básicamente piden a la propietaria pequeña que entregue su salario aproximadamente una semana en advance, costando a las empresas en realidad mucho dinero. Así que esto es algo que puede hacer incluso la Cámara de Congreso. Puede hacerlo en los niveles de cuentas. Pero me gustaría impulsarlo desde el lado federal. Tal vez dar algunos incentivos en ese aspecto. Pero ese es el tipo de fix que podemos poner en place en el interrumpiente con un presidente republicano que tenga un bolígrafo. Que pueda ayudarnos, que pueda ayudar a nuestras pequeñas empresas en esta comunidad y hacer que la salud sea más accesible y asequible. Sí.
Tú eres el candidato más joven en el grupo. La mayoría de los eventos que he ido a, los espectadores han sido, diría que blancos, pero eso no es correcto. Los espectadores han sido negros. Y probablemente la mayoría han estado ya en Medicare. ¿Cómo vas a hacer que las personas jóvenes se den a votar? ¿Cómo vas a hacer que la diversidad que hay aquí se den a votar? ¿Cuáles son tus planes para eso?
Absolutamente. Solo los últimos minutos he cerrado puertas en Columbia Street, State Street aquí. Dicen a la gente sobre esta noche y que vayan a venir a votar. Eso es lo que nuestra campaña ha estado haciendo desde el principio. Hemos aparecido en todos los barrios, todos los ayuntamientos, todas las comunidades, hablando en oficinas y en medio de la ciudad de Kingston. Porque creo que hablamos de los varios bloques de votantes que no ven a votar. Creo que parte del problema es que no aparecen en estas áreas. Dicen: "Estos no votan, por lo que no vamos a hablar con ellos". No hay campaña que diga: "Vete a hablar con los votantes más jóvenes porque es un oxímoron, los votantes más jóvenes, ¿verdad?". Pero esto es, mira las estadísticas aquí. Hay 135,000 niños de 18 a 34 años en el estado de Nueva York. ¿Sabes cuántos votaron en la última primaria congresista? Richard, no puedes decir esta una porque sabes la respuesta. ¿Alguien sabe? 900. 900 de 135,000. Así que Cassie, debes ayudarnos a hacer esto mejor esta vez. Debes ayudarnos a hacer esto esta vez. Pero este es el gran problema. Si podemos movilizar este bloque de votantes, esta elección puede ser llamada por las 9 de la noche. Podemos derrocar a Faso no solo con un pequeño margen, podemos derrocarlo con un gran margen. ¿Cómo lo hemos hecho? Lo hemos hecho primero al aparecer en cada ciudad. Hemos hecho eventos en las noches de salsa. Hemos hecho eventos que no son eventos tradicionales que ni la gente va a ir. No incluso por razones políticas, pero una vez que estás allí y hablas sobre los problemas. Sobre el cambio climático, la neutralidad de la red, que fue repelada, que cumplió la semana pasada. Estamos defendiendo la reforma de la seguridad de la arma común. Tenemos personas que han venido a nuestra campaña tan jóvenes como Althea, 16 años, que aún no pueden ir. Pero que están allí y querían hacer cambios y ayudar a una campaña a avanzar en el tema de la reforma de la seguridad de la arma común. Y solo diré esto, si no hacemos nada con esto en el Congreso, una vez que los compañeros de clase de Althea están todos votando, todos vamos a ir a votar inmediatamente. Y la mitad del Congreso también. Porque estas son las cuestiones que preocupan a muchos de los votantes más jóvenes. El cambio climático, podemos hablar de Medicare for All todo el día. Pero si no tenemos el planeta en 50, 60, 70 años, entonces no vale la pena hablar de estas cosas. Así que hemos estado haciendo esto desde el principio. Tenemos una gran seguimiento de redes sociales. Hemos sido activos en la publicidad en Facebook e Instagram y Twitter y cosas así. Y creo que vamos a traer un gran bloque de nuestros votantes más jóvenes. Sí.
¿Tienes planes para contactar a las universidades y a los colegios y a estudiantes que estén ausentes de votos en otros estados?
O que están en colegios en otros lugares.
O que están en colegios allá afuera. O en el estado. También, nuestra hija está en la universidad fuera del distrito. Y siempre nos llevamos su balada, pero sé que muchos de sus amigos no están votando. Así que...
Sí. Así que esto es, probablemente no haya un recurso central para todos los estudiantes que están registrados aquí y que vayan a la escuela en otros lugares. Pero hay que ver, lo que me gustaría ver es que esto puede hacerse. La mayoría de las personas están en Facebook o en diferentes sitios sociales donde se comunican entre sí. Y mi enfoque ha sido tratar de hacer que los compañeros de clase se involucren en sus amigos. Palabra en boca, comienza el texto de grupo, difundir la palabra. Esto es la forma más efectiva de hacerlo. Ahora, 10 de las 11 ciudades de este distrito tienen instituciones de educación superior. Muchos tienen más de una. Así que hemos sido muy activos en los campus universitarios. Pero esto es, creo que a veces pensamos en los votantes más jóvenes y es como decir, "Bueno, campus universitarios". Hay un grupo de 22 a 32 años que también no votan. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y esto es, en parte, la culpa de los votantes más jóvenes. Y luego también sabemos que Faso es un tipo bastante malvado. Es un tipo sutil, va a dirigir anuncios de ataque. Va a dirigir una campaña malvada, como tenía los últimos dos ciclos. Así que tener un candidato que pueda seguirle por su historial, no solo en el Congreso, sino en 1987. He estudiado este historial. Tener un candidato con un fondo político, con experiencia gubernamental hará la diferencia, creo, en mantenerlo accountable por eso. Pero también, si se envía a Congress, que conozca esta comunidad, que tenga experiencia gubernamental para trabajar con nuestros gobiernos locales, nuestros gobiernos de cuentas, sus supervisores, nuestro gobierno estatal. Ayudar a traer esos recursos federales de vuelta a nuestra comunidad. Así que ese es mi fondo. Y cuando estaba pensando en cómo dirigir esta carrera, para mí, ir a cada ciudad es muy importante porque este es nuestro advantage, Faso. Él no aparece, él no hace reuniones de la ciudad. Visité un pequeño evento en un diner de Gavin Monticello. Y después de que todo fuera hecho, el dueño me dijo: "Gareth, amo todo lo que tuviste que decir, pero..." Pero tenía una imagen de él mismo y Chris Gibson. Y dijo: "Estoy un poco torpe, Chris Gibson está en la balada también y tú también. No estoy seguro de quién voy a votar aquí". Dije: "Chris Gibson ya ha estado en el oficio ahora por casi dos años". No tenía idea de que Faso era un miembro del Congreso. Así que me dijo: "Envíame una imagen y la guardé en el mensaje de la Cámara". Pero creo que ese es nuestro advantage, que podemos hacer eso y aparecer en estas áreas. Y eso es lo que he estado haciendo desde el principio de mi campaña. Hemos sido aprobados esta semana por un número de grandes uniones laborales aquí en el distrito, en el estado y más allá. Quien, saliendo de la aprobación editorial de The New York Times, quería apoyar a un candidato que ellos creen que puede ganar esta posición este otoño. Así que ese es mi fondo, ese es mi enfoque. Pero lo que es más importante, me encantaría escuchar lo que está en vuestra mente. Necesitaré preguntas, ideas, pensamientos. Y me encantaría votar en junio 26, el próximo martes. Así que muchas gracias y gracias a todos por tomarse el tiempo.
¿Hay preguntas?
Sí, venga.
¿Puede hablar sobre su plataforma de salud, por favor?
La pregunta está sobre mi plataforma de salud. Así que creo que soy un demócrata de Medicare for All. HR 676. Para mí es la versión de la ley de Medicare for All de la Cámara, que co-sponsoré junto a más de 100 demócratas. Para mí, esta es una de las luchas más importantes en esta carrera. Para mí, la salud debería ser correcta, no un privilegio. Puedo contarte, podría pasar media hora contándote las historias que he oído en las diferentes ciudades de este distrito sobre familias que han hecho todo bien. Ambos padres están empleados, los niños están en la escuela. Ambos están en planes de seguro de salud privado. Y en el momento en que algo va mal, o toman una fianza segunda en su casa o van en deuda porque no pueden pagar por los gastos básicos de la salud. Pero también es Medicare for All... Las personas me dijeron: "Bueno, ¿puedes ganar con Medicare for All en estas comunidades rurales? Las personas tienen miedo de que el gobierno tome la control de tu salud". Esto no es eso. Este es un sistema no lucrativo que sacará los beneficios de nuestro sistema actual. Estas compañías de seguro tienen un deber fiduciario de sus accionistas. Tienen que asegurarse de que los ingresos suban y las gastos bajen. Los ingresos son lo que pagamos por nuestros premiums. Los gastos son cuando enfermamos. Así que están tratando de asegurarse de que uno suba y uno baja. Y he visto a través de este distrito, he visto a través de este distrito en las ciudades republicanas más rurales que esta cuestión puede ganar. Hice un evento en St. Johnsville, Nueva York. Este es el pueblo más nordestino de Nueva York. Está en la Riva de Mopock en el condado de Montgomery. Y había 15 o 16 demócratas que votaron en la última elección. No hay un pueblo donde muchos demócratas aparecen. Y estaba sentado en un bar junto a la milla local que estaba en la ciudad. Y todos en esa ciudad tenían este banderín azul. Lo compré y lo he puesto desde entonces. Y les pregunté: "¿De qué se trata este banderín?" Y dijeron: "Estás un poco torpe, Chris Gibson está en la balada también y tú también. No estoy seguro de quién voy a votar aquí". Dije: "Sabes que Chris Gibson ya ha estado en el oficio ahora por casi dos años". No tenía idea de que Faso era un miembro del Congreso. Así que me dijo: "Envíame una imagen y la guardé en el mensaje de la Cámara". Pero creo que ese es nuestro advantage, que podemos hacer eso y aparecer en estas áreas. Y eso es lo que he estado haciendo desde el principio de mi campaña. Hemos sido aprobados esta semana por un número de grandes uniones laborales aquí en el distrito, en el estado y más allá.
Traditional type of events that no people go to, not even for political reasons, but once you're there and you're talking about the issues, about climate change, net neutrality, which was repealed, expired last week, standing up for common sense gun safety reform. We have people who've come to our campaign as young as Elthia, 16 years old, who can't even vote yet, but who are out there and wanting to make change and help a campaign move forward on the issue of common sense gun safety reform. And I'll just say this, if we don't do anything about this in Congress, once Elthia's classmates are all voting, we're all gonna get voted out immediately, and half of Congress as well, because these are the issues that a lot of younger voters care about. Climate changes, we could talk about Medicare for All all day, but if we don't have a planet in 50, 60, 70 years, then it's kind of not worth talking about these things. So, we've been doing this from the beginning, we have a big social media following, been active on advertising on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and things like that, and I believe that we'll be bringing out a big block of our younger voters. Yes?
Adam, do you have plans to reach out to the colleges and universities and to students who are, who would be absentee voters in other states or areas?
Who are attending colleges elsewhere?
Or either attending college here or from elsewhere, or in the state, or also, like, our daughter's out of district in college, and she, we always bring her ballot, but I know a lot of her friends are not voting, as to please.
Yes, so this is, there's probably no one central resource for all the students who are registered here and go to school elsewhere, but it has to be, what I'd like to see is, this could be done, most people are on Facebook or on different social media sites where they communicate with one another, and my approach has been try to get classmates to engage their friends, word of mouth, start group texts, spread the word, do this on social media, and that's the most effective way of doing it. Now, 10 of the 11 counties in this district have a higher education institution, many have more than one, so we've been very active on the college campuses. But this is, I think we sometimes think young voters, and it's like, we could say, well, college campuses, there's that 22-year-old to 35-year-old group that also doesn't vote. And this is, partly I blame the New York State voting laws, you can only vote on one day out of the year, a lot of other states have early voting, it's, if you wanted to vote in this primary, if you weren't a registered Democrat, you would have had to register as a Democrat last October to be able to vote on this Tuesday. That makes absolutely no sense. Early voting, same-day registration, there's many types of voting reform we could implement at the state level, which would make it a lot easier for people who are working a couple of jobs, dealing with childcare, often driving far from their home to their work, working long hours, to make voting much easier. But then the thing most importantly is, people want to vote for something to believe in. If you keep electing people from both parties and nothing changes, and this is, I think, part of the problem. You know, we've had the biggest, I think, expansion of natural gas and fracking under Democratic administrations. You know, I'm standing proud to be a candidate who wants to help get us off fossil fuels in the long term. This is something that a lot of younger voters care about. Childcare is an issue I've heard from a lot of younger families. $14,000 a year is how much it costs for childcare in New York State right now. The federal tax credit, $3,000, woefully inadequate to meet the costs. So, putting these issues, I think, front and forward in a campaign will help bring out that block of voters. Yes?
With huge economic, proven economic and medicinal benefits, where do you stand with legalization of marijuana?
Questions on the legalization of marijuana. I support the legalization of marijuana for a number of different reasons, I think it's about six of them I can think of, I'll give you the first few. First is the opioid crisis. This is something that has disproportionately hit our history hard. I think Sullivan County is now number one in the state for prescriptions per capita. I think Greene is now number one for deaths, opioid-related deaths per capita. Here in actually Columbia County, up in Chatham, is showing a model that could be used, Sheriff Walkman up there, Peter Walkman, what they've been doing is making law enforcement part of the, part of the solution to this, and so I can talk about this later. But this is number one is for the opioid crisis. I think marijuana is more effective and safer treatment of pain. My father has actually glaucoma, his doctor for years has been saying, you should, you know, use marijuana, but he doesn't because we have this stigma around it. I've had parents whose children have epilepsy approach, have approached me a number of times and said, we can't get our hands on something that we've been told is the number one, the best way of treating this, and we can't get our hands on this. So that's number one for me. Number two for me is, this is gonna happen eventually in America, there is no question about it, this is a matter of, this is not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Why don't we capitalize on the economic impact of it in New York 19? We are 7,900 square miles, this congressional district, for 700,000 people. We have large amounts of farmland, we have a lot of, actually, younger farmers, Richard Welkin, farmers who want to get engaged and want to be, want to be, start doing these new cash crops, it's hops or barley, might as well add marijuana, head it to that list, and use that tax revenue to help with our local property taxes. So, when I talk about legalizing marijuana, in the same intention, it should be lower property taxes, it's a win-win.
Let everybody get high on the taxes.
Yes, that's the slogan right there. I'll give my last reason, because this isn't a boring one too, is, in New York State, in New York State, it costs $60,000 a year to put someone behind bars, $60,000 a year. Do you know what it costs to send someone to bar college a year? Less than that. So, we spend enormous amounts of money on incarceration. If you look at, it's, you won't necessarily go to jail for a long term for a low-level marijuana conviction, but you rack up two, three, four of these, and you're gonna end up behind bars for a longer period of time. We should take this completely out of the criminal code. This should be looked at as an infraction, if at all, but then ideally, you know, the legalization, this wouldn't, you know, be a crime whatsoever. It can be regulated, you know, absolutely regulated, that's how you get your tax revenue, but to fact, put people behind bars and it costs much money, disproportionately impacting communities of color, young African-American and Latino men mostly, but this is something that is causing taxpayers far too much money. Those are the three of the several reasons. Yes?
I'm a Democrat, and everything you say I relate to. What I don't hear is what is it that makes, why shouldn't I vote for Fasso? What is it that, what is so egregious that he's doing that you're gonna counter? Where's that toughness? Where are you gonna come up against him? He's gonna be supported by the Mercers, they're gonna come and they're gonna go against anyone that comes against him. Where are you showing that comparison? How can we relate, how can you get more people to vote for you? By saying, you know what, this is what he stands for, but this is what I'm gonna do to fix it.
Well, right now I'm doing something tonight, today, that John Fasso has never done. He has never put out a mic in the middle of a room and said, come and ask questions, come and bring your concerns.
We call no show Fasso, absolutely.
No show Fasso, for a reason. I did an event, I had a reporter who called me and said, Gareth, I don't believe that some of these issues you're talking about will play well in some of these rural communities. We took a drive up to Harpersville together, to Winnebago, and we knocked on this one door, and a couple came out, and they both were union members. One was a member of the carpenters' union, one was a member of the teachers' union, and they said, you know, we'll vote for you if you are supported by labor unions. And I said, here are my list of supporters, here's where I stand on the Janus decision, and here's where I stand on, you know, the movement for making sure we don't have more right-to-work states, things like this. They said, okay, you have your vote. The reporter asked them then, well, who did you vote for, you know, in the last election? They said, oh, of course Trump, you know, he said it the way he is, you know, he was out, you know. And there's a lot of voters like that. I have met so many voters who will vote Democratic if you show up and knock on the door, but are supporters of Trump. Many, but in many ways it's inexplicable, it's because of what they've been seeing on Fox News, it was a frustration with the way things were. But the best part was, he did ask them, you know, what do you think about Fasso? They said, well, we don't really know much about him, but we kind of heard he's the absent congressman, he's the absent congressman. I was like, yes, that's exactly right. He does, he doesn't do events. And I think part of the, Fasso, I think part of the reason he's won is he's blanketed himself, he's blanketed himself with this aura of being, he's a moderate, you know, I am on the problem solvers caucus, I am on the climate change solutions caucus, right? You know, you hear him saying this. Fasso is no moderate, I mean, look at his voting record, take, look at it in Congress, the very first vote he took, the very first vote he took was on the stream protection rule, repealing it, saying that we need more coal waste in our streams. Couple months later, he voted to allow more pesticide runoff in your streams. He was the deciding vote to repeal the Affordable Care Act on the Budget Committee when many Republicans actually voted against it. You could go back to his record in Albany, when George Pataki went to do, clean up the Hudson River, make GE clean it up, one of the only members of the Assembly who was against it was John Fasso, after he took $12,000 from GE. We talk about equal pay for equal work, woman working a job and a man working the same job, he should be paid the same salary. Well, when the state Assembly tried to do this, tried to pass a constitutional amendment, 150 members of the Assembly, 149 vote yes, one voted no, guess who it was? John Fasso. Take his entire record, going back to the first day he was elected, he has never been a moderate, he has always been a far, on the far right of the ideological spectrum, and it has hurt this district. His votes have taken away people's healthcare, he stood by silently as his party voted to raise taxes here, so I think the contrast is very clear. Someone who is showing up, someone who is trying to bring healthcare to our communities, protect our environment, make sure that our property taxes aren't going up, I think the contrast is very clear. Yes?
Have you taken money from any corporations?
So, technically corporations are not allowed to give to political candidates.
But have?
No, corporations have, I'm not taking any corporate money, and I won't, I mean, this is not, you're not allowed to, corporations are not allowed to, you know, give political candidates money, so, yes, in the middle.
In what way do you plan to address climate change?
The question is, how will I plan to address, plan to address climate change? This is one of the most important questions to me, given that if we kick the can down the road on climate change, anyways we kick it to ourselves, because we're gonna have to deal with this eventually. So, it starts to be with just stop the rollback of all these policies. We have someone who's ahead of the EPA right now, who doesn't believe the EPA should exist, so making sure we fire Scott Pruitt. This is not, this is a bipartisan...
The longer he stays there, the more people will agree with him.
Well, yes, that's the problem. At least upon, in the North Country, we want to fire Scott Pruitt, so that's number one. Stay in the Paris Agreement. Here is an agreement that took years and years to negotiate, try to make sure other countries are on board with the United States and our goals. North Korea and Syria are signatories to this agreement, and now the United States is not. So, just stop the rollback, stop the rollback of when they're continuing to get rid of these regulations to help protect the environment. But then the next step is, we have to transition off of fossil fuels long term. There is, this is one of the leading causes of climate change, but there is a huge potential for green jobs in this district. We have, as I mentioned, a number of universities here, this is, we have a lot of people who have, they're intellectual leaders on clean energy, on solar and things like that, so we could capitalize on the economic impact of that here. There's gonna be things like, we're talking about less carbon dioxide going into the atmosphere, we're at the sort of getting carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, this process called sequestration, there's gonna be huge amounts of money invested in this by the federal government, it could be done right here in our area. So, I look at this both from clean energy future, but also in terms of the jobs that could be created right here in our district. Yes? Yes, yes, go ahead.
What's your position on immigration?
So, this has been, I think for all of us, one of the most disturbing things that has happened in the past couple of weeks. I mean, every day, reading, seeing what's on the news, this is, I keep thinking, like, this is not the America that all of us know and love, and it goes beyond, it goes really beyond just policy. These stories, you know, reading that story last week of a mother who was breastfeeding her child, and the child was torn out of her arms, I mean, can you imagine? This is not something that happens in the developed world, this is not something that happens in the United States. But is, what is even worse to me is, this is not some accident, this is not some rogue law enforcement officer doing this, this is dictated by the highest levels of our government. The President of the United States, they want to send an international message to the entire world, that the United States that we know, the country, the, here we are, the Statue of Liberty in our harbor, the land that was built on immigrants, they want to send that message that we're no longer that country. That is what this is all about, is telling people around the world, don't come to America anymore. We are a land of walls, of borders, and the President's immigration policy, you could really sum it up in one sentence, if you're white, you're welcome, if you're not white, you're not welcome. That's why he doesn't want immigrants from Africa, but he's trying to get, he's encouraging more immigration from Scandinavian countries. This is the basis of this. Look at Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico, 5,400 people died after Hurricane Maria, yet it's, we are almost ignoring them, half the nation is without power. Every other state, Louisiana or Texas, even New York, when we had Hurricane Sandy, we all rallied together. Federal government came together, passed a $60 billion relief bill for New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, yet Puerto Ricans are being completely ignored. Give me one explanation besides the fact that they're Puerto Ricans. I can't think, I can't think of one. If this happened anywhere else, we'd be, the military would be there, would be there, the entire response of the federal government. So, this to me goes beyond, it's not just, it's not just policies. I'll tell you what policy that I support, but it's really, it's a moral question for me as well. On the policy level, I absolutely support a Clean Dream Act. We have dreamers in this district, I've met dreamers in this district as a part of my travels, these are productive members of our community, many of them are being sought after for jobs because they have gotten a good education, so a Clean Dream Act, the DACA problem was started by Trump, so it should be an easy fix to this problem, which is keep DACA in place, pass a Clean Dream Act. I would revive that 2013 immigration bill that passed the Senate in a bipartisan way, pathway to citizenship for the 13 million residents living here in the United States today, who are, most of them are contributing economically to our society. Fasso opposed this when he ran in 2016. Fasso's record on immigration is one that we have to bring to the forefront, and I will in this campaign. He's been against this bill, doesn't, he's against the pathway to citizenship. We have here in our district, up in Rensselaer County, the only county in New York State that has allowed its sheriffs to be deputized as ICE agents. In our district, New York 19, Fasso hasn't said a word on it. And if you look on your Facebook page, he's running ads right now on MS-13, he's trying to get this fear factor going. Now, I've knocked on a lot of doors in this district, I've heard a lot of concerns, I've yet to knock on a door where someone's concern is MS-13. We don't have an MS-13 problem in New York 19. Fasso is doing this, he's trying to use this to get some of the most extreme voters riled up for this election. So, I, immigration to me is one of the most important parts of my agenda, and we need to fight for this, we people will stand up and protest what's coming out of Washington, the Keep Our, Protect Our Families Together Act, which is being put forward right now, I would absolutely co-sponsor, but I will stand up for our immigrant community. Yes?
I can. So, I want to ask you to play out two different scenarios, okay? So, one is, you're elected, you're our highest representative, okay? One is the Senate remains Republican and the House is Democratic. The other is both branches, both the Senate and the House are in Republican hands. What will you be able to do, what are your hopes to accomplish in those different scenarios?
So, House Democrat, Senate Republican, and then both Republican.
Yeah, because you're talking about getting rid of Scott Pruitt.
Yes.
And it's a Senate conversation.
So, I believe that a member of, the job of a member of Congress is both voting on pieces of federal legislation, is proposing pieces of federal legislation, but it goes far beyond that. A lot of your work is constituent services. You have a veteran who needs something done with the Department of Veterans Affairs, you have an immigrant who needs help with INS, with paperwork, especially now when this system is so backlog. Farmers who need a lot of help with flood mitigation funding, being able to, most farmers can't hire a grant writer. USDA actually has a large number of resources that aren't applied to, because most farmers don't have the time, they don't have the technical capabilities to navigate, these are hard grant processes. So, I want to be the pothole member of Congress, where I am being very, very akin to these issues and constituent concerns, because that is what your job is. Look, the issues I've heard in this district, I'll give you an example, is a lot of the farmers who are coming into this area, a lot of the younger farmers, for example, have lots of student loan debt, so fighting for something that, we, if you go into public service, your student loans are forgiven after 10 years. Tell me a profession that is more of a public service than farming, please, I mean, they grow our food, this is a public service, so student loan relief for our farmers. I don't think this should be, this should be a partisan issue. Helping navigate the, not just the Department of Agriculture on the federal side, it's the Department of Agriculture and Markets on the state level. Richard Ball, the commissioner there, is a good friend of mine, and I think having a candidate with state government experience, a lot of this federal money is routed through the state and then comes down, so I can help get the federal money, but then also lobbying on the state level to bring that to our farmers here in the area. So, if I look at this as, as the constituent services end of it is very important to me. I sat down with town supervisors in this district, many of whom are Republican, who have sent to me, because of what their grants are talking about, through the environmental facilities corporation and others which aren't partisan, we would actually want to have you in office because you could help us bring those to our local governments. And I think this also is, could help us win this race, I'll tell you why. I did a little event up in Ossego County, a little town there, and Morris, and they invented a diner, and I gave a gentleman there my card, and said, it's a Democratic primary in the bottom, so we handed it right back, and he said, I never voted Democratic primaries, I don't vote Democratic at all, I never have. I said, well, you know, just out of interest, tell me what are your top voting issues? He said, well, number one, my fire department. We've lost so many young people, we've lost so many people, but we can't find volunteers so long to get trained, so we have, we're looking at privatizing, this could be a huge expense, and, but it really obsessed me, I've been on this fire department for a long time. He said, number two, is our school districts keep merging with the next one over, they say it's, this is the last time it will happen, and it almost happens again. He said, number three, this one always gets me, is our town doesn't have snowplows, so the county snowplows come in when it snows, they all tear up all our sidewalks, so every year we have to pay to repaint all our sidewalks, except for just buying a new snowplow for the same cost as it costs to repaint the sidewalks. I said, what part of those issues will you not want to vote for me? This is what I've been talking about in my campaign. And he said, okay, well, you know, I'll give you a look, and took my card. So, I think these issues are a great way to win over the voters we need this fall, because, yes, we have this partisan rancor going on, and Fox News is saying all this crazy stuff, but the issues that keep many of our neighbors up at night are ones that aren't partisan, they're ones that we can get things done with Republicans on, they're ones that we could work with our state and local governments on as well, and that's what I will do as a member of Congress, is, yes, you will have my voice loud and clear, marching on the Capitol, standing up in the press conferences on this disgraceful immigration policy, but you will just as quickly have my, have my cell phone call away on the potholes, on the sidewalks, on the fire departments, because that's what a member of Congress should do. Yes, in the back.
Hi, thank you for doing this. My biggest concern right now is the gerrymandering. We have to do so much more work Democrats do, we, even when we have more votes, we're not winning. We elected a president who had got 3 million, 3 million less votes, and in many of the districts that had more Democrat votes, they had 75% Congress people, GOP Congress people elected. My biggest concern is how do we get, and it's, you know, it's 2010, 2020 is the next time you change those maths, how do we work against that? The street board just kicked it back down.
Yes.
And the Democrats, I don't know what the hell they're doing, but they were definitely asleep when this little man was running around and totally redistricted our whole country. And that's the most frightening thing to me, and to me, the most important thing that has to happen in Congress is laws have to change, and I don't know how you're gonna influence any Republicans' minds there, I'd love to know how you plan on doing that, because I wouldn't want to shoot them rather than torture them, but that's why I'm not a member of Congress. But, you know, what can the Democrats, I know that there's some kind of commit, some kind of brainstorming thing with the gerrymandering thing now, but how do we address it now and until 2020?
This is, I also want to start by saying, there is a, I do believe there is gonna be, in the near future, a real, we're gonna start to see bipartisanship again, because I think that people of America are so sick and tired of this partisan fighting, and, but the issues have to be the same. I knock on Republican doors, I knock on Democratic doors, people might like different parties, you know, in a different way, but the issues are exactly the same, and at some point, that is gonna catch up with our political system, because we're gonna have, if us as Democrats don't address our healthcare system, don't address the environment, don't address these things, we're not gonna have even, our own voters are gonna leave us, because we're making these promises and not doing anything about it. So, there is just such, and I could drive a day in the Winnebago with me, and you might be surprised, but there was so much agreement on so many of these different issues, that I think we're gonna see in the next decade or so, I think, we're gonna start seeing, I think our countries come together in a way to address these problems, and there's an urgency, urgency to this. We talked about climate change, there was such an urgency to this issue. We talked about corporate money in government, and politicians taking large amounts of money from corporations. The need for campaign finance reform, every issue we talk about today, if you pass campaign finance reform, it's all easier. Gerrymandering, so this is, so much of it is done at the state level, where the state legislature draws it. In 2022, we're gonna have lines that are drawn for the first time by an independent, independent redistricting commission on the state, on the state side, so we'll see what happens. Act 2020, so it's after the 2020 census. So, step number one is, protect the census, protect the census. What Trump is trying to do is make the census not do a poor job counting people in communities of color, by putting a citizenship question on the census. So, step number one is, keep the census accurate. Step number two is, the federal government should do everything it can to have the state governments put in place a fair redistricting process. So, while this New York 19 was drawn by judges, if you take a look at our Assembly and Senate lines, you think New York 19 is bad, our Assembly lines are really bad. This only makes it fair. I think we have to have these seats drawn in a way, shouldn't benefit Democrats, shouldn't benefit Republicans, keep counties whole. There's no reason we should have Rensselaer County without Troy, without East Green Bush, no way we should have Dutchess without Poughkeepsie. Keep these counties whole. Yeah, they might be tough races for us, but that's good, because then we'll, you know, we'll win on our ideas.
One question.
Yes.
You're new to the topic. Fasso, I don't know, I mean, you're, you're wrong. Fasso, the first time I've seen Fasso this whole year was this morning on television, on CNN, lying about, and this, this bugs the shit out of me, because they keep talking about how immigrants are illegally entering the country, because they're being denied access at legal entry points, and no, and would you stand up and say stuff? It took the, took the news 19 months to say Trump was a liar, and not a whatever they called it, you know, so, I mean, he's, he claims he's a junior congressman, he says nothing.
Yeah.
Are you, do you have the tenacity to stand up and say, you know, would you be able to do that in a room full of those?
Well, Fasso, Fasso said, I mean, if you remember when he ran in 2016, do you remember what his number one issue was? Remember this? Said it in the debates, it was the federal debt, the federal deficit. Can you remember this?
Amazing.
And, so he gets elected.
It'd be too much weight, you want.
Exactly. He gets elected, when he got elected, the budget deficit was $600 billion, $600 billion. President Obama, you know, the fiscal conservative right, you know, had brought it down to low levels of, from President Bush, who had blown it out of the water, Obama, who was responsible, brought it down to $600 billion, which sounds like a lot, but it was lower than it was. A year later, where is it today? 1.3 trillion, so it doubled. So, Fasso, he can't get up there and say, well, you know, I'm, I was in the minority party, like I was in Albany. He's in the majority party, he sits on the Budget Committee, and did nothing. The federal deficit has exploded, the debt is now the same size as our GDP, I mean, talk about, he's either, he's either complicit with the problem, or he's ineffective, he has to pick one of those two, and there is no other way around it, and that is going back to his very first day in Albany. He, when he ran in 1987, he ran on very much the same issues, about he wanted to bring, you know, keep our budgets balanced and fiscal responsibility since 1987, you know, this is what he's been talking about, and he's done absolutely nothing toward that end. So, I will, you give me an issue, and I'll show you where Fasso has failed us in this district.
30 years of failure, is enough evidence?
I, I hope so. So, yes, in the front, I'll come back, I promise. Yes.
You indicated that you visited 161 towns, I guess, in this district.
That's already, that's already the question.
Okay. Do you have a plan when you become a congressman, how you will stay connected with the people in this district?
So, the question was, you visited all 163 towns in this district, do you have a plan once you've been elected, how you will stay connected to those, to those towns? So, when I announced I was doing... So when I announced I was doing this tour, I did it, I announced in mid-October of last year I was going to do this. I got a call from a very well-known, you know, political consultant. He said, you're crazy. First of all, you can't do this, it's impossible. It takes way too long, it just doesn't make any sense. You know, if it was 50 towns, yes, 163, there's no way. He said, second, you're never going to be able to raise money. He said, these areas have no cell phone service. How can you possibly ask people for money? He said, third, you're going to places that there's not a lot of Democrats there. So why would you do this? I said, I imagine, take all those, those are the three reasons why I'm doing this. I go to these areas because Democrats don't show up there. Why do Democrats not vote in St. Johnsville? Because we don't show up there. Even though they care about exactly the same issues that we do. And often, in these rural communities, it's even more acute the issues are. I was out in the village of Deposit, it was western, counting this district. And 75% of the students in the local school district are on reduced free lunch. One of the school nurses came to me, came to our event, the whole town hall we did there. And you know what he said? We've never seen anybody voting for Congress, Democrat or Republican, show up in this area. So my promise is, I will go to every, continue to go to every town every year. I did this entire thing in six months. You know, I've done five events a day sometimes. You know, you could actually do the whole thing in about a month if you did work at that level. But I will continue to go every year. How will I do this? Well, we elect people to Congress right now. We pay them $175,000 a year. A member of Congress makes $175,000 a year. They spend 40% of their time doing what?
Fundraising.
Fundraising. So why don't they return 40% of those salaries? Right? If you paid someone $100,000 a year to do a job, and they spent 40% of the time on the clock, you know, playing video games on the couch, you would say, give me back $40,000, it only makes sense. So this is why, I think, this is, at the core, my promise is, no matter which way the House is divided, if it's Republicans or Democrats, I'm not promising that you elect me and we'll have Medicare for all tomorrow, or we'll save the climate tomorrow. My promise is, I will fight as hard as humanly possible for these issues. And I will continue to show up every single year. And I've raised money in this campaign, about $19 for New York 19. Had a huge grassroots fundraising effort. I've raised more money from this congressional district, a higher percentage than any other candidate in this race. I've raised a higher percentage of low-dollar fundraising, $200 and below, than any candidate in this race. We've done it the hard way. You know, I've, four of my seven competitors have been able to give themselves large amounts of money. I wish I could do that. I don't quite come from those kind of means. But this is the way it should be. It should earn the votes the right way. We've raised nearly a million dollars. So don't let anyone go out there and tell you, I have the money, you know, vote for me. We've raised the money, we've done it through a grassroots effort, and we've done it while showing up in each of these towns. And I will continue to do that every single year, once in office.
Thank you.
Yes.
How do you feel about the impeachment?
About impeachment?
Yeah.
So this is...
Anyone in particular?
This, I want to wait till the Mueller probe is complete. I don't think we should impeach purely based on political disagreements or policy disagreements, which I have many of, where the president, of course. And I am as troubled as all of us with the direction of our country. And I will be outspoken about what is coming out of Washington on each of these policies. I have been in my campaign. But I think impeachment should be reserved for high crimes and misdemeanors. And let's let the Mueller probe finish. Let's wait and have a full reckoning of facts. And if everything we read on the news is true about what's in this report, we're going to have plenty of facts to go off of. I think starting the process before then, before that collection of facts is out there, it's going to be much more politically, politically much more difficult. Because then when the report comes out, it's going to have, that's where the body of evidence is going to be. So I, to me, let's wait till the Mueller report to be finished. There's an argument that's been made on the emoluments clause, there is ground enough. This is actually, let's wait till the courts. This is moving through the courts right now. Actually, Zephyr Techout has been very active on this through her work at Crew. And so let's let court decide on this one. But I want to wait until the Mueller probe is complete.
Is there a fixed date that that's supposed to be done?
I don't believe there is, but I know, if you look at, if you look at the past investigations that Mueller has undertaken, they're normally, they go pretty quickly, and they're very thorough in their findings.
We know it's thorough.
Yes, for sure, yes.
I would say we have a lot of choices this time in the Democratic slate as fine quality as I've ever had my choices for one position. But my overwhelming concern is getting rid of Faso. So I want to know, if you don't come out on top next week, are you going to get out and fight for the person who does? And use some of your contacts and that kind of thing? So that we do that, so we defeat Faso?
Absolutely. And I don't actually go above and beyond that. Whoever, if I think I'm going to win, if everyone in this room votes for me and tells five friends, I guarantee you will win. But if I am not the nominee on June 26, June 27, I will make sure whoever is the nominee has the keys to my Winnebago. So they can, you know, go out there, go out and about. But actually, this to me is, it's why I put a positive campaign from the very beginning. It is, the stakes of this election are too high. I think it's, the entire world is watching the United States right now. And they're asking, is the United States the party of Donald Trump? Or did the United States make a mistake? And yes, you know, we, 3 billion more people voted for Hillary. Maybe the United States isn't the Donald Trump country. We can make that statement this fall. And the way we make it is by taking back the House. That is how we make that statement. The way we take back the House is we just need 23 seats. New York 19 is in the top five of everyone's calculations. So winning this seat goes beyond any of us candidates, far beyond any of us. And that's why you won't hear negative word out of me by any of my opponents. First of all, you all know us better than many people do because you've been coming to our events and reading up on us. This will be a very well-educated primary lecturer. But this is why, whoever the nominee is, I will work as hard as I possibly can to help them, to help them win the seat this fall and take back the House. But I don't think we can forget, this is going to be a very, very, very tough race. And the attitude that no matter who we nominate, this is a blue wave, we're going to be fine. Look at the past two cycles. It's just not true here. There's more Democrats than Republicans in this district, registration-wise. Yet we've gotten crushed in this seat the last two cycles. We've spent more money than the Republicans, and we've gotten crushed. We have to try something different. Don't let people tell you, I've raised the most money, I got this in the bag. If that was the case, we'd have Congressman Sean Aldrich today. It doesn't make sense in this New York 19. We have, we have, I have a neighbor down where I live, he has an NRA sticker on one side of his car and a Sierra Club sticker on the other side of his car. Registered Democrat. Does not always vote for the Democratic Party. He will vote if you knock on his door and talk to him about those two issues. I have another neighbor, a couple, they have a Trump side of their yard, and they have a Bannon side of their yard. Registered Republicans. They will vote for us, but they're not going to vote for us just on a TV ad. They're not going to vote for us just on a slick piece of mail. It's going to take someone knocking on their door. What I've tried to do in each of these towns is, some of them, you can knock on every door if you want. But some of them is, get the local town librarian on your side. Get the town historian on your side. Get someone who is respected in these towns on your side. I did an event in a little village, little town called Gilboa in Siskiyou County. Anybody know where Gilboa is? I know, Ricky, you know where it is, but you know. It's up in Siskiyou County. Just think, what, 800 people there, so pretty cool. And a handful of Democrats voted there last election. I did an event in a little bar named Clark's. It was the only establishment in town. And there was a Trump sign on the wall outside, it was a pretty gritty place. I talked at the bar about half an hour, and by walleye fishing on the reservoir there, exchanging walleye fishing stories. After about half an hour, he said, Gareth, I can name you every person in this town. I know everyone here, I've been here for three generations. Our families own this bar every generation. What are you doing in town? I said, well, I'm running for Congress, here are my issues. He said, you know what? Everyone who walked in the bar, everyone who walked in that door for the rest of the night, he said, you know what, this guy's a Democrat, but he makes sense. He makes sense for a Democrat, give him a listen. And I was talking about the very issues I'm talking about tonight. There was a lot of disagreement. But I think his support of my campaign will go so much further than TV ad will, or a mail piece will, or a celebrity tweeting about me on Twitter. Because that's how you win in these areas. It's about, it's not just about getting the Democrats on your side. It's about making sure that people feel like, if they vote for you or if they don't vote for you, we're going to be in a good place. So yes, in the middle.
Excuse me. 2:30 AM, I was watching MSNBC and very upset, and the lovely Althea's Herschel came on. And I was talking about her, we chatted a little. Can you talk a little bit about her issue, which I think is really, really important in this district? The whole issue of gun control? Because I think, from what I've read, a lot of Democrats are afraid to come out and make statements about gun control right now because they're concerned about this midterm election.
Yes.
So how are you going to address that? And what are your basic tenants on this issue?
Yes. This is probably the second most popular or most asked question I get. And I understand that this is a tough and often controversial issue, especially in this congressional district. And I get it, I grew up working on a farm, where a gun was a tool. Very much like a tractor. We had livestock, we had chickens. I grew up, I've gone to the range before, gone hunting before. I understand, in many ways, the culture of gun ownership in this community. But I am very strongly believe that we need to do something on the federal side to stop this issue of gun violence, particularly these mass shootings that we see. Universal background checks, this is supported by the majority of Americans. Safe storage laws. This is, the number two cause of gun deaths in this area in New York 19 is accidental shootings. A child will find a gun under a couch, shoot it by mistake, and send it down. Safe storage laws, majority of gun owners support. Something that Faso has voted against every time he's had the opportunity to. But yes, I believe in an Sullivan's ban. Why? Because I think even with the universal background checks, and even with the safe storage laws, as long as you have certain, these types of very dangerous guns, no one law alone will stop shootings overnight. It's just not going to happen. What we can do is make sure that when a shooting happens, they're not so deadly. 49 people killed in a nightclub in Orlando. More than 70 people killed in Las Vegas. I mean, these are in a matter of minutes. You're not talking over a day, you're talking in a matter of minutes.
By a single shooter.
By a single person, a single shooter. I mean, this is the very dangerous weapon being used by one very dangerous person. And you can't outlaw, you can help with, on the mental health side, you can pass universal background checks. But making sure we don't have those certain types of guns will make sure that these shootings aren't as deadly as we've been seeing them. I believe in the same as Sullivan's ban that President George Bush ran for president out, a Republican. I believe in the same as Sullivan's ban that George Pataki, a Republican governor, supported. This is not a far out there position. This is a position that Republicans and Democrats have held and have supported and have voted for. And I, to me, this is, I understand that politics are tough on this. But it is a critical issue in this election. It's a critical issue for our country because people are dying as a result. And I cannot come here and look you in the eye and say, another shooting just happened, I'm going to pray more, I'm going to think more, I'm going to hope more. But I'm your federal representative, and my job is to vote on something to fix these problems. So I will stand up for the Sullivan's ban, I will fight for it. But most importantly, to win this race, I will go to the rock gun clubs and talk about it. I'll go to the sportsman's associations. Because this should not be such a controversial issue. I'm not, no one's knocking on anyone's doors and taking away their guns. It's not going to happen. It never has, it won't. I support the Second Amendment, I support the right to bear arms. But there has, there are limits on these rights. You can't get all fire in a movie theater, but we still have the First Amendment. There's limits on these rights, and these are common sense steps to help save people's lives. And I'll say on just the politics of it as well, we have seen in our campaign, I did an event up in the old chatroom general store, Wendy and Cassie were there. And toward the end of it, we were wrapping up, and a couple came in, and they came up to me and they said, we have one issue. We have one, we only have one issue, the assault weapons ban. I said, well, this could go either way, right? And I said, you know, I support it. They said, okay, you got our vote, and they just walked out. Now, you know voter files are public, so you can look them up. So I said, just out of interest, let's look up, and these are Democrats, Republicans. There were two Republican voters from Rensselaer County, hadn't voted in about 10 years. And I said, what was it about this issue that got them so engaged? And it hit me on the way home. It probably had a high school student at home who came home one day and said, Dad, Mom, I am scared to be in my classroom. Please do something about this. And that got them engaged with this. So, and if we don't, as I said it before, if we don't do something about this in the Congress, wait till Althea's classmates are voting. If we lower the voting age to 16 today, half of Congress will be gone, I promise.
What's your stand on separation of church and state?
I still feel very strong in the separation of church and state. And I come to this as someone who grew up actually in a very religious background. I grew up in a very, my parents were members of a faith-based family and, you know, community here in the district. But the separation of church and state is critical. Many of these laws, they should not, well, all these laws should not be based on anyone's religion or anyone's faith. They should be based on the Constitution. And that's why, to me, I strongly support many of, things like marriage equality is so important to me, why I fought for it in Albany, fought for the right, for same-sex marriage here in New York State. These laws shouldn't be influenced by the, to people who are elected, their religious beliefs. I fought proudly for Roe v. Wade, the state law. And I will fight for that on the federal level as well. It's more, it's more important now than ever before. I believe these things personally. These are personal beliefs I have. And when people are elected and say, I don't vote for this because of my religion, religion shouldn't come into government. This is, no matter what you believe on this issue, even if you're against, if you're against it because of your religion, you should still vote for it based on the Constitution. So I believe in a very strict separation of church and state. I'm going to go one of the persons, welcome back. Yes.
One of the things I think that contributes to gun violence is the levels of stress in this country. And to my mind, one of the biggest stressors is income inequality. Can you talk about that?
Yes, certainly, I think, and this also goes to a lot of our school districts. I've spoken with a lot of teachers who've said to me, we are being asked to do more with less. We have students coming who haven't been given breakfast. They're getting reduced lunch here, we know they're going home, and their parents are working multiple jobs. And we see boarding signs, we see already. But we're still trying to focus on helping these students get into college. We don't have the resources to be able to help students with issues that go beyond academics. So one thing I would like to support is, on the school side, helping our local school districts have the funding for mental health resources, for to go be, make our schools more like community schools, where they can help our students who come from backgrounds where their parents are low-income or working a couple of jobs, have those resources. The income inequality is, if you look at this congressional district, the average income is about $50,000. But Delaware County, actually, is the largest county geographically here. It's actually bigger than the state of Revillant. And if, I think, the average income is about $30,000, even lower. The average income is actually going up, district-wide. But at the same pace, the number of students who get reduced or free student lunch is also going up. number of students who get reduced or free student lunch is also going up. So, if you look at, if you break that down, income inequality is increasing in this district.
You say average, you mean sort of median or median?
The median family income in this district, household income.
Not median?
Yes. Not median, no, median, yes. How do we reduce this? I think there are policies you have to support to make sure that, if it's healthcare, making sure people have the, are not going bankrupt over healthcare expenses. If it is public education, making sure that a lot of our middle-income families and low-income families cannot afford the cost of higher education. Making sure our public schools, no matter what community they are, are giving students the same shot at success. This is more support for rural, for many of our rural schools. A lot of our rural communities, because they're losing, people are moving out, their property tax base is decreasing. When your tax base, you lose money to your school district, then you lose resources. It becomes this spiral. So more support for our rural schools, which are experiencing that. This is also, how do we fund this? It's through a more progressive task though. I think the beauty of America is we never say, we never cut you off as how high you can go. In America, you can go as high as you want. We've always said, everyone will always have, everyone will have an opportunity, no matter who you are. You know, I remember when I left, got out of high school, went out and got a job, like $50 in my pocket, couldn't buy a car. I biked to work, saved up money, rode a public bus, bought a car, put myself through college, I worked as hard as I possibly could. And to me, that's what America was. But I tell you today, I will not be here today for Pell Grants. I mean, my parents weren't signing, co-signing my student loans. This was, I was lucky I was in that lowest income bracket when I was able to get the whole thing paid for. But a lot of parents, a lot of students aren't that lucky. They make just too much, just too much to be eligible for Medicaid. So if their child has an opioid crisis, they're spending tens of thousands of dollars on their own, make just too much to be eligible for Pell Grants or the Excelsior Scholarship. So their student is going into tens of thousands of dollars of debt. There are things we can do that will help reverse income inequality through supporting and giving more people the opportunity to participate in our economy and in our economy success. That make sense?
It does. But how about minimum wage?
Minimum wage should be a living wage. But here's, minimum wage cannot be done on a state level now. It's often not on a state level. Why not? This district, we touched four other states. We touched Vermont, we touched Massachusetts, we touched Connecticut, we touched Pennsylvania. And so I've spoken with many of our businesses, which are like in Hillsdale, I was speaking with Debbie over at the Indian Green River, and she was saying, you know, we are, the fact is that we, I compete with businesses just across the border in Massachusetts. Their work comp rates are lower, their minimum wage is lower, and it's easier for me to hire contractors there than here in Hillsdale. So this is a, you see, this is a race to the bottom problem we have, where states like North Carolina and others will put in place right-to-work laws, so the cost of doing business is so much lower. So we lose businesses from New York that go to these states. Pennsylvania, the minimum wage is much lower than it is here, so it hurts businesses on the western part of this district. If you did this on the federal level, if you could say that there has to be a regional minimum wage, there's no reason that people living five miles apart should be paid a different, have a different minimum wage. What you need in Brooklyn is not necessarily what you need in Chatham or what you need in Kinderhook. So you could set this on a regional level, and that would help our small businesses. I think that's the problem right now, is our small businesses are unable to compete with their competitors just across state lines. So yes, it should be a living wage. If you work hard and work a full-time job, you should be able to make ends meet. That's a simple premise. How do we do that? Healthcare, make sure healthcare is affordable, make sure education is affordable, make sure retirement is fully funded, social security, making sure there's a baseline in there. So if you are making X amount of dollars an hour, childcare, I mean, I could go through the list, but it is a, it's a number of, take away these expenses from working people, make sure that they're paid for, and then you can make sure that on one of these wages you could, you could make ends meet. Yes, it's all there is in the paper.
If you win, if you win, what will be the greatest temptation you have to resist?
You're evil, I'm sorry.
If you win, what's the greatest temptation you'll have to resist?
The question is, if I win, what is the greatest temptation that I will have to resist? Well, I'll have to say this, every time I come to Hudson, a record, you know, called me up and says, "Well, you're gonna have to serve me, right?" You know, so, you know, I always wanna have a good time with the mayor here, here on, here on Ward Street. But I think the question gets to, this is a powerful job, right? This is a big position. I'm a young person, this is a, you're a member of Congress, how are you not gonna let this go to your head? How are you gonna stay grounded in this community? And the promises you made to us today, how will you stay true to that? I think it's a really important question, it's a good question for all of us candidates running. None of us have ever run for office before, which is kind of unique in a seven-person field. And what I say is, look at where I come from. Look at, I grew up in a, in a family here in this, in this district that taught me values of love for your neighbor, taught me values of hard work. The reason I'm going into public, I went to public service in college was, when I talked about healthcare, it was from living without health insurance myself. I remember when I left my water bottle and job, I went to college, I had to leave my health insurance plan. Now, you think 22-years-old, everything should be fine, right? But to me, this was, when I was a young guy, my mother had cancer when she was 33, and she passed away as a result. And it was hard to think about living without health insurance when you know this runs in your family blood. But I kept thinking that this was, this is something that a lot of people go through, is choosing between their economic success and being on a health insurance plan. So that's why, to me, healthcare, one of the reasons healthcare is so important to me. The environment, hiking every peak in the Catskills growing up and seeing how the acid rate had destroyed a lot, the tops of many of these peaks. And this was fixed many ways because of the Clean Air Act, and the way we cracked down on these polluters in the western part of our country. It's something that drove me to public service, knowing how hard it was to find work after high school in this area, seeing many of my classmates had to move away after high school or after college because they couldn't find work here. So these are the issues that drove me to wanna serve this community. And this is what's gonna drive me in Congress as well, is never forgetting where I came from. And to me, the ultimate measure of accountability is my promise to keep showing up. My promise to keep doing events just like this, being a part of it, being a part of our civic life here, here in the district, showing up at events, looking each of you in the eye, hearing your questions and your ideas and your concerns every single year. I think that is the way I would stay grounded in our district, and how you know that you can trust me to fight for these, fight as hard as possible for these issues. Yes?
If whoever comes out ahead, whoever has the great privilege a week from now to start running against Mr. Fasso, is going to be attacked hideously. We know that. We lived it during his vote, it was disgusting. So I ask you to look inside yourself. Everyone has a vulnerability. What do you think they're gonna go after if you're the candidate, and how are you going to deal with that?
Well, I have the advantage of, he's been attacking me from the very beginning of my campaign. John Fasso's been going after me from the very beginning. Just about two weeks ago, he put out a statement saying that I was both a Winnebago pollution enthusiast, Winnebago pollution enthusiast, a charge that I embrace proudly. Yes, I could ride a bike around this district and I would use more gas than John Fasso ever would. He uses no gas, he does absolutely nothing, doesn't show up to anything. And I, we have a carbon-free campaign, we're gonna be buying carbon offsets to make sure that we're having a zero-carbon footprint. But to me, driving to every county and district is the most important part of being a member of Congress and campaigning for Congress. You have an obligation to speak to the people and listen to the people who you hope to represent. That should be a requirement for running for office. So I will never apologize or back down for taking, for going near this small town in this district. He will attack me for being young, he has, he continued to. I am, actually, if you look at, in the North Country, Elise Stefanic, when she ran, you know, the district just north of here, she was younger than I was. Similar story, grew up in the district, she went to every town in her Chevy Silverado when she ran, and she beat two self-righteous candidates. It's a, we've seen this work in upstate New York before. So I think being young is a big advantage. So when Lyndon Johnson ran for Congress, he was younger than I was, and he ran on this vision of bringing electricity to rural America. And people said, "You're crazy. How are you gonna do this? How would he bring electricity to rural Texas? You're gonna have to pack and put up these big wooden poles on the road and run wires along them, 10, 15, 20 miles into the middle of these rural communities to serve one house? That's impossible." Look what we have today. You can build a house anywhere you want, and you have electricity, it's a public utility. I look at the internet as that same battle today, is, the internet should be a public utility, that no matter where you live, you should have access to broadband. Run these fiber optic lines to our, into our rural communities, it will be an economic game changer in these places. And this is what government should do at our core, is these public investments that will help make a lot, a lot difference in the lives of the average American and folks here in our community. That's what our job is. Forget that border wall, forget the $1.5 trillion taxes, try, take that money, turn it around and create something like broadband, which will make a big difference in a place like New York 19. He has attacked me for working in the governor's office, I think he will continue to do that. And I also, I'm proud to have government experience. I, at a young age, had the opportunity to work for the governor of the home state where I grew up in, and coming, being the first in my family to earn a four-year college degree, coming from where I came from, this is an opportunity I would never turn down. And I'm proud to have fought for things like marriage equality, I'm proud that I could go to small communities in the Catskill Mountains today and talk about the work I did after Hurricane Irene, a record of government service. I fought to ban fracking. John Fasso was a fracking lobbyist. I stood up for marriage equality. John Fasso, when he ran for governor in 2006, said, "If the marriage equality bill came before my desk, I would beat away." I am, if you take my record of his, he ran last, he ran last year, guess what? The Property Tax Act. Oh, the Property Tax Act, it's a good thing. John Fasso was in office for 18 years, the Property Tax Act never passed when he was in office. He was the Assembly Minority Leader, he talked about it, but it never happened with a Republican governor. So he wants to attack me for working for the governor, I say, "John, well then, stop running on the governor's record, stop running on the Property Tax Act." So I hope he comes after me for that. And I think, also, this is a government job, this is a public service job, and it's important to, when you elect someone, they have at some point at least worked in government or tried to work in government or done some sort of public service. Both, I think it gives you more legitimacy with voters, but also, once you're in office, you have to know how the system works. You have to know who to call on the federal side, on the state side, on the local side. And I think having someone who can do that will help us be able to keep this seat for years to come. Yes?
International relations, there's the thing called authorization, we said military force? Used by presidents, sometimes abused by presidents. Do you think the Congress should take back some of that power, or should the president, not just this president, but any future president, have the power and flexibility to use? Can I say that?
The question is on the AUMF, and whether Congress should try to reclaim some of the power that has been given to the president under the AUMF. So after 9/11, we passed the authorization to use military force, which allowed President Bush to basically go into Afghanistan and conduct other attacks against the perpetrators of the September 11 attacks. That same AUMF has been used to justify everything since from the Syria attacks to what happened in Yemen, in other countries, Libya as well. We need to pass a new AUMF. I go back to the, you look at the Constitution, you look at the War Powers Act, the War Powers Act is basically now, it's toothless. The War Powers Act is passed after the Vietnam War to make sure that we didn't, that Congress had more say over what wars we went into. And it basically said you could, the president can respond to certain attacks for a certain amount of days, but then has to come back to Congress for true authorization. This has been, you've had a number of legal opinions written by lawyers of the State Department which have completely made the, that have made the War Powers Act toothless. So if we need a new AUMF, I would fight for that, and how we can have some control here as Congress, it's Congress, it's the purse strings. We're the ones that give the money for these engagements to happen, and we should say, unless there is gonna be a new AUMF, we're not gonna keep budgeting for these overseas operations. And this will give the taxpayers, all of us, much more of a say in what happens. And I'll say, as a matter of principle, I think we spend far too much money on our military. I think we spend $680 billion right now in our Department of Defense, we spend $40 billion in our State Department. I would say, if you invest more in diplomacy, you can avoid the wars in the first place. The fact that we spend more than the next seven nations combined, we are now working on, what, a seventh aircraft carrier, and the next nation behind us has two, hundreds of billions of dollars, dollars for War F-35s, why are we spending this money? Why? I would argue, look at where these things are happening, look at what states are building these weapons of war, states that are crucial for presidential elections. So, let's roll that money back and use it for things like broadband and for helping in our communities. Lyndon?
Why do you think TCHOW lost?
The question is, why do I think TCHOW, TCHOW lost? I think the, now, I don't personally, when I vote for someone, I look at a lot of different, I look at a lot of different things. The last thing I look at is where they're from. It doesn't make a difference to me. To me, it's how will you vote in Congress, what will you vote on, and how will you fight for the issues that I care about? But we know in this district, the attack that you've never lived here or worked, you were voted here before, is a devastating attack. It is a, it's effective. I mean, you probably know better than I why it's effective, but it's, they use it over and over and over again. They're trying to send this, they try to paint certain candidates, you know, as, you know, moving here to run, make people feel like they're being taken advantage of. I look at Zephyr and say, Zephyr would be an incredible voice in Congress right now. Here's an expert on the monuments clause, who is suing the president currently, if she was in Congress today, she could be helping lead our party's charge on this very important issue. So I'm disappointed she lost, and I wish she would've won, but I think that charge really hurts in this district. A lot of our land across, across the river, across the Hudson River, is watershed land. Eighty-five percent of New York City's water comes from New York 19. How is the watershed created? Eminent domain, seized a lot of farms, a lot of towns were actually moved and relocated. And I still today have done events where people talk to me and say, "You know, my family lost property 80, 90 years ago." I'll say, you know, some of these resentments run deep, and I think that's why they continue to use this attack, is they know that it works in these various areas. So, I don't, I think that is one of the big reasons why she lost. I think it's important in this race that we take that card off the table. Don't let our candidates get attacked for this. Yes?
But it must wasn't possible, and that's what people want to have.
Yes, Fasso, I mean...
But the Democrats don't say that, even though he is, like, the best candidate.
Yes, but if you have never lived, worked, or voted in the district before, and Fasso has lived, worked, and voted here for 37 years, the attack will ring a little hollow. I think, to take it, I will use that attack.
Oh, I mean, they've had turns where it could've known there.
I will attack, I will attack Fasso for that, because I was born in Benedictine Hospital. And I hope he attacks, I hope he says, "No," but I hope he, you know, comes after me with something, I'll attack him for that, absolutely. If he wants to go after me on gun control, for example, I'll say, "Let's go to the range, let's see who's a better shot." The guy who grew up on a farm, or the guy who grew up in Mineola? Not a farm.
Mass people.
Mass people. Sorry, I'm getting my Long Island suburbs wrong here. But absolutely, but this is, it's a, I hate this attack for a few reasons. I'll give you an example. When Hillary Clinton ran for Senate in 2000, do you remember she did, came up here, she visited a lot of our towns? I remember she came to Kingston and did a big rally, and a lot of the farming community was a little skeptical, you know, just moved here from Washington, what does she know about us? She, I remember my parent, or someone had come to me after that rally and said to me, she was more articulate on upstate farming issues than El Damao ever was, than Moynihan ever was, and she has her vote, because she really got it. I mean, I'll give you an example. You had a candidate who got to Alster County once and said, "I'm a dairy farmer, just like all of you." How many dairy farms are in Alster County, do you think? Not a lot. It's apple farming, it's vegetable farming, it's livestock. Dairy farming's up north. Dairy is in Skowheri County, in Columbia, and, you know, you have Obsigo County, in Delaware, in Sullivan. You know, Alster is not really known for its dairy farming. And then people may want, you know, may hate of that, no pun intended, but, but I think, I think you have to understand, I think you have to understand more of the nuances of this area, and that's what these attacks are trying to get at. Did I ask you the question, Lyndon?
No. How are you doing with Republican women?
I'm doing with Republican women. Very Republican in this room?
Republican.
That's a big team, I don't know. I think they're not voting next year.
No, I think we've done well with voters of all political stripes, both men and women. We've done, I, my campaign, by the very product of going to these small towns, so the goal is always, you know, emerging in primary, then talk to as many Democrats as you can, but you actually end up in some of these areas, a lot of Republicans show up because there's not a lot of Democrats in these areas, in these towns. So we've been a lot of times talking to Republicans, which actually I think has helped me a lot if I am the nominee, and here, I mean, you've, it's remarkable how many times you hear the same thing that, you know, Lou Dobbs said the night before, being repeated to you the next day. But there is a lot of, I think, reasonable middle ground on a lot of these issues. We did an event up in Hartwick, a little time in Obsigo County, and I sat next to a gentleman there, he gave, I gave him my card, and went issue by issue by issue, disagreed with me on everything except for broadband, as the only piece of common ground. And I said, "Get, out of interest, give me, give me the name of one person who you voted for besides Trump, who you think is like a good person in office." And he said, "Well, my state senator." I said, "Your state senator actually voted for a number of these things as well." He said, "Well, I don't care." He sat across from me, just like you, he gave me his cellphone number, every time I called him, he calls me back. And I said, "Well, it's that difficult, you know, you're playing hard." That's my cellphone on the back. Give me a ring." Called a few days later with something I had said about guns, I called him back. He's a Republican voter, I'm not going to have his vote in the primary, but I think come the general election, that's the kind of vote that may not vote for you, but also might not vote against you. And that, I think, is key. Not all of us are as lucky as Rick to get all, every ballot, you know? But, we-
But they were lucky.
Yeah. You're the mayor of Hudson, you have to be a Republican, yes. So, yes?
Much of an impact in local elections, does the national propaganda machine have? That is, it's, you know, there's peace in North Korea, and the economy's great, and it's going to come here eventually too, and the jobs are up for African Americans, and great party, great president. Does that have any impact here? I listen to Fox News, so it's an alternative universe.
Yeah. You, it's, I think in this area, so someone's striking to me, we talk to someone, and they're with the president on many issues, but you ask them what those issues are, and they're not the issues that they're voting on, that they care about in their, in their local government, things like that. And I have noticed a very much a divide between Trump voters and Fasso voters as well. Like, last November, I was canvassing the local state senate candidate in Dutchess County, in a more Republican area, and you have this long driveway, it's around this time of night, getting dark outside. Get up to the top of the hill, every sticker on the truck outside was, "Make America Great Again." I look in the window, I see Fox News on, Lou Dobbs doing his show, and the candidate hits me on the shoulder and says, "Garrett, let's not hit this door, it's a waste of our time. We know we're not going to give this vote." I said, "We might as well try, right?" You know, we walked up this driveway. So, we knocked on the door, the homeowner came out, we talked to her for about half an hour. She said she would have voted for the county legislated candidate because he was against the county jail, and she was saying, you know, "You have too many empty prisons, why don't we build more jails?" And she grilled me, like, "Where did you go to church? Where did you go to school?" All these things. And then she said, "I'll vote for you, because Fasso voted for this healthcare bill. And my husband works at the local hospital, and he's probably going to lose his job if that bill were to become law, because we get so much Medicaid funding there, and this was, had an $800 billion Medicaid cut." And I guess they'd been talking, or some letter was sent out to the employees, the nonessential employees, that we stand to lose X amount of money, hence where they lose certain jobs. So, she was furious at Fasso. Then she said to me, "This was Fasso's bill, this was Paul Ryan's bill, Trump called it mean, Trump would never have signed this into law." You know, I was like, "Yeah, Trump had like a beer party after it's signed." Didn't say that, but, uh, but then, so, we left, and as we're leaving, she said, "I know you guys are Democrats. Don't say anything bad about the president, because he's making government-run like a business, and you Democrats don't know anything about business." And, you know, what I would have said to her is, "Yeah, he's making it like one of his businesses, right? You know, we're all going to bankrupt." But I do find that difference between the Trump voter and the Fasso voter. I think you have to exploit that difference to win this race this fall. Trump is a brash, angry, you know, kind of erratic president.
Immoral.
Immoral. Fasso is, Fasso has voted with him on every, on almost every single issue. So, politically, he's tied to him. But in many ways, he's also a country club Republican, right? You know, he, he, he's not earning, he has, you know, but it's a reason he's doing all these ads on MS-13, is he wants to earn that vote. But I think we can earn that vote if we show up and talk about how our approach is better for those very issues, those, those local issues that these voters care about. Because at the end of the day, it's, you, we all kind of want the same thing. We want our children to go to a good public school, we want to make sure the school bus driver has passed the background check, we want to make sure we call the fire department, it arrives. There was these issues, it's the same issues at the end of the day, but it's what we see on TV and who we listen to, who, you know, might be, might be different. Yes, Chris?
So, I lived in Garrett, I was a county legislator in Ulster County, in Soleris, and I pulled a big upset five years ago and flipped a Republican district that had been representing my Republican legislature for eighteen years. Garrett contacted me, offered to come out and campaign with me. I'd never known him before, I knew one locally, I had interacted with one of the other candidates prior to that. So, just putting that out on the table, you know, there's a sense of loyalty that part of me feels like I would owe gratitude back to Garrett. But, that being said, I've attended three of the debates, I've watched or listened to two others on the internet, I've attended a few of Garrett's town hall meetings, and I would have to say, if he hadn't helped me, I would still view him to be the most superior candidate out of the seven, because if you listen to this man speak, he's a policy wonk, okay? And the reality is, this district right here, District 19, has never been represented by a Democrat. And I know Maurice Hinchey's family, I knew Maurice quite well. Maurice Hinchey was in office for twenty years in Soleris. He was a strong progressive liberal, he was in the Assembly for eighteen years prior to that. This district is only 35% geographically what District 22 was. Maurice Hinchey represented District 22, not 19, okay? When you have these districts that are leaning to the right, this district leans to the right, when you factor in, forget about people saying there's a slight enrollment advantage of Democrats, a lot of those numbers are college students, eighteen to thirty-year-olds, whose enrollment data have not been updated. If you throw that out, you're going to have a Republican advantage in this district. And then when you factor in conservative voters, this is a right-leaning district. We need to vote for someone like him in the primary, because come November, he will get the most split they did votes, and the most votes outside of the Democratic Party. And that is what policy wonks are what easily get votes outside of their registered party, because the logic they present resonates with voters of other political parties, and that's what it's going to take. He is our best chance to beat John Fasso, that is a fact.
Well, thank you, Garrett.
And I've come out strongly endorsing him. Thank you.
And nobody would have known that you were last year.
I will say this, I'll say, one thing is, what I've tried to do in my campaign is, take the issue that I've heard in these different towns, and put them in the center of my policy agenda. And to me, this is why going to these different areas, you hear things that aren't on MSNBC or on Fox News. I'll give you an example, Delaware County, as I mentioned how large this county is, there's nineteen towns in Delaware County. In eighteen of the towns, where I did events just like this, I think the number-one issue or number-two issue that was raised to me was healthcare, but it was healthcare in a different way. It was the lack of a, of a single maternity ward in the entire county. Three counties in this district don't have a maternity ward. This is not an issue we have. You have Plumby Memorial, not that far from here. This nomination in Kingston. Kingston, we had two maternity wards and northern Dutchess across the river. But in three of our counties, this is something I've heard over and over and over again. We did an event up in Schohary in Millburn, and a couple came, and they said, "We just had a second child." It was the fifteenth child born at the local hospital's emergency room that year. So, but this is, it's healthcare, but it's nuanced. It's not just, it's not just about having the money, it's about having the actual services there. We had somebody come to our event in Hampton, he had had a little carpentry accident, and he said, "I went to the local hospital." But they were Skyping someone in from Cooperstown down to the nurse practitioner to tell them what to do, on this accident. And this is the delivery of healthcare in rural America right now. It is the loss of population has led to the loss of services, loss of services has led to the loss of population. It's become a spiral, and it has to be reversed, it has to be reversed, and I don't see, you cannot expect our local taxpayers to keep picking up the taxes, it's impossible. We cannot raise property taxes in these, in these areas. It will destroy, they're way too high, it will destroy the communities. It's with our fire departments, our EMP services, which are being forced to privatize. Down in the Menia in Dutchess County, it costs $300,000 to privatize their fire department. There's a local farmer there whose taxes are about $10,000 per year, because he lives in that fire district. Why do you have to privatize your fire department? Because you can't find volunteers. It takes a year to train. People are working further away from where they live than ever before. It's not the old model, where you're working in the fields, and the bell rings, and you run to the truck, and it's right down the road. When you consolidate these departments from towns, the average call takes so much longer because you have to get to the fire department, and then the, getting, going to the hospital is so much further away. And it just adds to the problem. So, what my focus is, 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 let's bring back, when we talk about infrastructure bill, let's make it address these specific needs. Not just roads and bridges. It's about our local municipalities having what they need to create the kind of environment where our people want to, young people want to stay, where people want to move to. We have everything else. It's a beautiful place to live. This is the Hudson Valley, the Catskills, and beyond. We have everything else. We just need that support for our municipalities. Yes?
Do you have any thoughts of pushing for public transportation to the area? That has been a big struggle for us. There was a point where my other daughter, and we were talking about help, my other daughter was sick, and we had to forego some treatment because we just, we didn't have the extra car to go back and forth to Albany, because we couldn't, we couldn't get it locally, and I was very calm, and having public transportation would be really helpful. Something from Chatham to Albany, it was just, it was impossible.
A basic public bus system in many of these communities would likely not, would never turn a profit, and you never could really make money out of it. So, there was no incentive to really do it. And because, we talk about this on a county level, but what you just identified is that a problem, is these are cross-county issues, where you live in Kinderoke or Chatham or Gant, you might want to be going up to Albany. You might not just be applying what in the state, from the county. So, this is-
Couldn't fill a bus in a week in those, in those lights.
Oh, but this is, it takes, public transit is a long-term investment. You're not going to start a bus, it's going to take two or three years, it's going to take two or three years before people actually start relying on this, because the local businesses have to adapt. There's the, a lot of the families only own one car, if a car at all, and have adjusted their schedules in a way that it works, so it's going to be a change in culture. Getting it right, making sure the loop is right and the time is right. I mean, you have, we have UCAD in Ulster County, which actually works very, very well, but it took years to get it there. This is just a reality. So, I would like to see this happen in many, or Delaware County, this is another thing we see in Delaware, big, big county, bigger than Rhode Island, but no public transit system. Sullivan County has one of the lowest rates of car ownership. We have, we have met, I met a mother there who had missed several prenatal exams, simply because her husband had the car for, during the day. And, so we're seeing this more and more and more. So, invest, and this is, we can't expect, we can't expect the state government to do this. They have a billion, several billion-dollar budget deficit every year. This has to come from the amount of resources we use on things like the military, on things, on these massive tax breaks we're giving away. Bring them back to our rural communities, bring them back to upstate New York. We lose $40 billion a year, state, to the federal government, more than we get back. So, New York City has to be paying that much more to the federal government, more than we receive in federal services. It's an issue of fairness. Bring back more of that funding to help our local governments do things like public transportation.
Garrett, I think we have time for one more question, if you want, I think Garrett had one.
The library is closed.
Okay. I'll do, I'll do, very quickly, yes.
The, I came here, there were a bunch of friends of mine who would have come, but they had other things that were going on, and I said, "Oh, I will come back and I will report on what I heard." So, I've got a half a dozen friends who I'm going to write to about this. And what I'm going to say is that this man is local, local, local. And if we're going to win this race, if we're going to beat Fasso, this is a man who knows this district, and this is something that we can get behind. Because these are people who start saying, "Well, maybe this guy, maybe that guy." And I think it really distinguishes you from the rest of the candidates in a way, because I've listened to a lot of these things, and, and you're really distinguished in that regard. And so, I got to go write some emails.
Thank you, Garrett.
What was your final response?
Okay, yeah, I guess, we've talked before about how important it could be to get the youth vote out, you know, how important it could be for us as Democrats if that happened. And, you know, I've told you, I think that your relative youth is actually an advantage in that regard, you know, not just because you're younger than some of the other candidates and than Fasso, then, but because you're more in touch, you know, with some of the issues that might mobilize the youth. But we both know it's not really as easy as that. I mean, it's notoriously difficult to get young voters, who even registered young voters, to actually show up and vote. So, I just want to hear what you think you'll do to try to make that happen, because it could be critical, you know? So, what are some of the issues, or what are some of the strategies? I mean, we're all going to be there to help you with that, so that's partly what I want to hear, you know, because we're all going to have to be working on that when he gets the nomination.
One thing I've heard from, one thing I've heard from younger voters is, there's this, tired, being tired of piecemeal solutions. Tired of politicians only proposing the compromise, only proposing what they think is possible, saying, you know, "This is what we would like, but we're not going to propose it because we can't do it, we can't do it." And you have this very much like a resigned effect, you know? Climate change is difficult, but it's like, not the tough issues, we're not going to talk about it. Healthcare, Medicare for All is what we want, but like, public audit is more politically sound. Sullivan's ban is what we need, but it's too risky, so don't talk about it. That is what turns off a lot of younger voters, who are in this for the future. They're in this for the future of their lives and our country. That is why I'm running, it's because this is about the future, it's about building a future to believe in. Building a future that, when we go to the polls, when we wake up and we look ahead and we say, "I'm not just voting for today, I'm not just voting to send Fasso back to his lobbying shop in Albany, I'm voting to build a future that is the kind of future that I dream of. A future where you're not going bankrupt over medical expenses, you're not worrying about what's going to happen with our climate, you're not worried about going to school and a shooter showing up with a, with a military-style weapon." I mean, that is the future that all of us believe in. And unless we run on policies that will actually implement this, am I a little bit of an idealist? Absolutely. I'm guilty as charged. But unless we shoot high, we're never going to be able to even come close to that. If you come, what's that?
Just say AMH.
AMH. Unless, unless you, I mean, if you come to the negotiating table, and your best fix for our healthcare system is a small tweak to the ACA, what are you going to compromise on? Where's, where are you going to end up? That's where you start, where are you going to end up? You're going to end up with nothing. If you come to the negotiating table with HR 676, you say, "Here's where I think our healthcare system should be, and let's work together to get it there," yes, you may not end up exactly with that, or end up with a lot better of a healthcare system today. So, that is how I fundamentally believe we will both inspire the kind of turnout we need amongst younger voters, older voters, all 150, all 150,000 Democrats in this district, and then also be able to go to the other, the other side, go to the rural communities, talk about this, how it's affecting our neighbors in a specific way. It will be such a contrast from John Fasso, who is just going to run his same nasty attack campaign. Don't get me wrong, I'm going to run, I'm going to go after him for every single vote he's ever taken in his life. I have, I think, three quarters of them memorized already. But, I, I, I think we're going to do that. And look at this on the numbers. This is going to be my closing statement for, for the email tonight. There's 300, about 300,000 people who are going to vote in this election. It's higher than normal, we think, and not in the primary, in the general election in November.